And open up the meeting. Kelly.
Henry County Commissioner, Henry County, Missouri, Thursday, April 3rd, 2025, second day of the April term. The Henry County Commission met pursuant to adjournment at the courthouse in Clinton, Missouri. Those members present were Jim Stone, Presiding Commissioner, Mark Larson, North District Commissioner Jake Bradley, South District Commissioner Kelly Narrett, Henry County Clerk. At 9:00 AM, Commissioner Stone brought the meeting to order. The minutes from the Tuesday, April 1st, 2025, meeting were read. Commissioner Bradley made a motion to approve the minutes. Commissioner Larson seconded the motion, motion carried. The minutes from the closed session, Tuesday, April 1st, 2025, meeting were read. Commissioner Larson made a motion to approve the closed minutes. Commissioner Bradley seconded the motion, motion carried. Expenditures for the following are approved to be paid: law enforcement, general revenue, coroner, 27th Circuit Treatment Court, Court Administration, Road and Bridge, General County Government, inmate security, Sheriff Revolving Fund, and payroll. The monthly report for the Recorder Deeds Office was reviewed and approved. Mark Harden, Emergency Management Director, visited with the Commissioners regarding the moving of the generator. He believes a good space where it would be on the north side down in the moat. Mark explained that Everbridge is a mass media text messaging system that notifies folks of severe weather and other various alerts within the county. He explained that the perimeters for weather are set by the National Weather Service and that the reason some folks didn't get messages about the storm on April 2nd is because you must be within the threat area or polygon to receive the message. Discussion was had regarding safe shelter spaces at which locations in Clinton were open to the public to take shelter. Commissioners discussed various locations. It was apparent that something in downtown Clinton area needed to be open to the public. Mark suggested that we could temporarily open the old emergency management basement for the public when they need to shelter in during severe weather and tornado warnings. It was suggested that Mark put the information on... That needs to say the website, sorry. Where shelters were on his Facebook pages as well as the county website. I'm wrong, okay. Dennis Bowers, Road and Bridge Supervisor, visited with the Commission about a pipe bid opening that was held in August of 2024. Dennis explained that when the bid opening was done, that V-Brock sales was awarded the bid, even though West Pipe Company's pipe was lower. West Pipe charges dropshipping charges when they deliver pipe and V-Brock does not. Therefore, V-Brock was awarded the bid, as with the dropship charges, West Pipe would have cost more. After discussion with the Commissioners, it was agreed that the bid process was done correctly. It was just missed in noting in the minutes why the V-Brock bid was awarded over West Pipe. Dennis shared that there is a township who has been maintaining private roads for many years. They are not receiving gas tax or cart rock funding. Landowners are responsible for maintaining their own roads if it is a private road. The township recognizes the mistake that has been made by the board for many years and does not want to maintain roads that do not belong to the township. Dennis shared that there is an individual in the same township who has been doing maintenance on township roads without permission from the township and wanted the Commission to be aware that they may have to send a cease and desist letter to the individual. Signs and the cost of signs put up by the Road and Bridge Department were discussed. Dennis shared that he goes around every December and checks 911 signage. At 11:00 AM, Commissioner Bradley made a motion to go into closed session via RSMO 6100211 to discuss legal matters. Commissioner Larson seconded the motion, motion carried with a roll call vote. Stone, yes. Larson, yes. Bradley, yes. At 11:33 AM, Commissioner Larson made a motion to end closed session. Commissioner Bradley seconded the motion, motion carried with a roll call vote. Stone, yes. Larson, yes. Bradley, yes. At 11:37 AM, Commissioner Bradley made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Larson seconded, motion carried. I would like to go back up to that Mark Harden section there where I messed that up. Where it says Mark suggested that we could temporarily open the old emergency management basement for the public when they need to shelter in during severe weather and tornado. It was suggested that Mark put the information out to the public where shelters were on his Facebook page as well as the Henry County website. Is that okay?
I'd thought about that. Now, did y'all see that? One of the things I got thinking about, we gotta be awfully careful. Because if somebody goes in there, say, lo and behold, something comes through the roof of that thing, goes down, kills somebody, we're liable. That's where the deal, and the main reason is I just went through one of them, just got done with a lawsuit last year and it took about three years. But guess what? They ended up, and the guy that drove off and hounded dope and everything out there by fox hunters, they end up paying somebody who hadn't seen this lady in years fifty grand for that. And it was given to the accident attorney, got most of it. But that's the type of things you get into. And I just, that's what I, you gotta, you wanna make sure it's certified or something that keeps you out of it. Now, if you can put a sign on there, interadjourn risk, I don't know whether that clears it or not. I think that's something that we need to ask the Christian, make sure we're out of it. Because I don't wanna get in another one of those situations. Man, that went on and it went through attorney after attorney. Finally, one grabbed it. Guess what? He talked a little louder and he got it. We had the same, but they had everything and the roadblock was up there. And guess what? You go, bruh. And then the water came up later and covered the roadblock and that's all. Well, you go, they have a sign. Huh, what's that? But that's things I've seen over the years and I thought, you know what? We could get in the same situation, lo and behold. Because I know the riff is not in good shape anyway. Something happened, even though I think it's great, but just wanna make aware. And I think we need to check before we go to saying that's a certified shelter for people to get into.
Subby is on the agenda for today and I do believe that's going to be a topic of discussion. If we can just approve the minutes.
Okay. Uh, yeah.
Oh, uh.
Do you have anything else?
I, I.
Okay.
No, no. I'll make a motion to approve minutes.
I'll second it.
Motion made, made and seconded, approve minutes as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we have closed session. I remember this time.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second that.
Motion made, made and seconded, approve the closed minutes. Me, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye. Nice to hear.
Perfect, well done. First of the month. First of the month, and first of the quarter.
It's like, stop.
Perfect. These are yours.
Is that mine?
Yeah, mine look like this.
Oh, oh, we got different.
Yeah.
The rickors, you see, so.
Yeah. I got my own little bucket to put my pens in.
Okay.
So I do.
Everybody likes writing certain things.
Oh, yeah. I give it to that printer, it does print nice. It has nice printing. It's just slow.
It's rough, it's just slow. Man, it's so. Why am I asking? Should be getting close to being there at that time, too.
Yeah, I'm thinking of it, too.
Just a matter of scheduling.
Yeah. I'd say they're just doing the reports and stuff at this point.
Yeah, that's probably the first time. I don't think they ever come up. I haven't seen them before now.
You haven't?
Yeah.
They wouldn't here very long. In office, I mean, they could work night and day, but they just stay in the office. I feel like it's went really fast, honestly.
Yeah, I bet, too. Because usually they spend a lot more time.
I don't know. Well, in technology, it's just made that a lot faster, too. You know, the way we can share data so quickly.
How does that shed a comeback?
I couldn't tell you because we don't use them. So, like, the circuit clerk uses them, the jail uses them, so I don't know what their schedule is. Sometimes if we have things to shred, we just take it down to the sheriff's office. They just shred it whenever they come. As far as our office goes, we don't, we have a shredder in our office, so we don't just shred a lot as we go.
Twenty-one yards. What if that's that bridge deck that on 1500? The deck part, the concrete and 2100.
Two thousand cases of that.
Last one?
Yep. The last one.
Kelly, do I have to sign it? I went and looked at that road, the first one that we got.
Mm-hmm.
It's fine.
Okay, so they've finished, they've completed the project?
Do you have that? I said there used to be a, there's, we have that.
So, which, which township was it?
I think it was Honey Creek.
Honey Creek?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have any warrants up here, like the blank ones?
No, wait, please, like, is there any warrants in there? I bet you don't have any.
They probably have no idea what that would be or what it would look like.
That's what I, I would just realize it.
So there is a process and I will go get some out of the office so I can show you guys what we do with that.
Yeah.
I'll go.
Ship may have a spill out. We should have some of those sheets. I've got some.
I will actually, I'll bring you one for right now, but I'll throw one on our teams so that you guys can just print off any, um, so they're cleaner copies than just copied.
That's fine, yeah, that'd be good.
I don't want you to print it out or ice it.
You could, you could, you could.
Never thought about that.
I know me coming in here with the computer and just shaking it all up, doing that. No reason to redo work. Do it right now.
I agree.
Yeah, a floater of those. Thought that took a little longer than it did.
Oh, it did last a little.
No, it didn't.
The seventeenth. You know, I have that one there. I tell you what, I use a lot of cookies. You know, one big coffee and then water for that night. Then I have to, I think I've got some more cookies to sell, cookies to sell. And then you can get some cookies and stuff. I gotta figure out how many you think we'll have. I would look for quite a few of them here this year.
Well, that's good.
Of course, we're gonna have, I think, a lot of new township people. And if that's the case, then they need to have, I hope they do.
I hope they do, too.
So you could have a potential of 76 township board members.
Oh, but the guy that doesn't like coffee, just likes the smell of it.
Don't want to have him make coffee.
All right, I'll put myself up.
Coffee, you, you be in charge of coffee, even if it's water.
You might be better off that way.
You have 76 township board members and 30 special road district members, so 106 actual board members could be possible.
I need about 100 and, I need probably 100 and, uh, cookies, 36, 140. To have, make sure we have on board bodies.
I like cookies, so. You're asking the wrong person because I think everybody should have gotten them.
We have them next day. That'll be our site, but anyway.
But some townships bring their road grader people, too, you know, but not everybody's gonna come.
Not everybody would be there.
There are.
We won't have everybody.
It's 106 possible board members that could be there. If they all show up, we're all probably in trouble.
You make sure your office, James Stone, is big enough? Uh, no, we haven't done anything yet. We're still getting some, all different counties in, to kind of match the third-class county. That's what we're trying to do. Yeah, well, some of them have, basically, they just, they've been into one this last, now a week, two, a year, and they're a township board together. Because we need the counties and counties, because it gets a little particular. There's a lot of, and we can only do actually the tax burden for the county, intercounty, and then the, uh, the senior census. That's only two, we can freeze. That's all we're responsible for, that's a reason. Well, and not necessarily, you just gotta put it in. In fact, then it'll, it'll all trigger from there. Independent of the year. Here, no, we haven't done anything yet. Okay, all right, thank you. Bye, bye. Wondering about that senior, don't freeze it. I tell you what, and last year froze it, wouldn't have been hardly anything.
I'm gonna try to bring some stuff in Thursday, if I've got it all together for that. I'm almost, I'll be honest with you, I'm almost to the point to where, and I wanna make sure I've got all the information right. I'm almost to the point to where I would rather, uh, the constituents, whatever you wanna call it, do it through a vote. I think it's gonna be easier because if, if, if what I think is right, and I'm 99.9% sure, people are not gonna be happy if we do it the way we can do it. Because, like you said, you're gonna get maybe seven, $10.
Yeah, hey, yeah.
So, but in saying that, if it's through a vote, everything across the board is done. The school is done, all the townships are done, everybody's done.
Then everybody's frozen.
Right, everybody's frozen. We can't, they can't come back to.
It's a vote.
It was a vote. So, basically what it does is, one, it, uh, solves the issue. It was a vote, so basically what it does is, one, it, uh, solves the issue of us trying to figure out how to go about it. It, two, it gives the people actually what they want, which is a tax break for their, their thing, but it, in the process, keeps us out of trouble.
Right.
Because that way, that, that way, they can't sue us, you know, whoever. I, I honestly don't think anybody's going to, but still, just to cover ourselves, I think it'd probably be better that we put it out, and, and like I said, I'm, what, Thursday, I'll know better, 'cause I'll have all the information for it. But I think the best thing is going to be, uh, to put it up for an election and let the people decide. Because then you're getting the true picture, you know, you've got, and personally, and I mean, even if I wasn't, even if you and I weren't above the age where it would work for us, you've got a lot of people that have paid taxes there. If, if it was up to me, I'd cut everybody's. But you've got a lot of people that are older and up in years, that are living on a fixed income, that if we can help them in some way, we need to. But in saying that, I also understand, like you said, we're a township, so we've, we've gotta be careful about how we go about doing it.
If we do everything, you know, just like everybody, if people vote on it, just like school, school bond. Now, one problem I see, that later, if they wanna pass anything, then you're not gonna vote it. And, uh...
What do you mean by pass anything?
Well, like the schools, if they won't pass a bond.
Right.
Then have everybody vote on it, you know, the seniors all vote a hundred percent, no matter what it was. They'll carry it.
But it won't, it still won't affect, even, even if the school passes a bond, it won't affect, it won't affect...
Won't affect the senior.
Yeah, 'cause when, when Ann and, and Rick were in here and they were talking about that, I was trying to figure, and actually Jake and I talked about it just a little bit. I don't think they understood, actually, what I was asking, because when I, when I said that, okay, let's just say we, we get it passed, and it's, it's there, and two years down the line, the townships are like, man, we're, we're needing more money. We're not, we're not making it on this. So it would be no different if, if they decide to raise their levy.
Than their F O D, huh?
Yeah, so...
That'd be that township.
Right, right, they would get their money, but that wouldn't mean that people's taxes that are sixty-two would go up. It wouldn't start over, you're locked in, because that, otherwise, what's, how, how do you lock it in if you don't lock it in? I mean, it's, it's gotta be one way or the other, and I, I'm pretty sure Rick and, and Ann weren't understanding what I was saying.
Well, my understanding is in the bill that if something new is voted on, so if we do pass a new tax levy, that that resets the base, um, for the, for anybody.
Let, let me check, 'cause I'll, I'll contact the guy that wrote it, but I don't think it does. Because if, if you did, then how would that, I mean, what, what kind of a tax break is that? If, 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 once you give them that...
I think that's been the biggest question for everybody, though.
Right.
I mean, I don't, I don't think that was the intent of that, but I'm, I, I will, I'll find out, 'cause like I said, there, there's a couple of different people, uh, 'cause I've been working on this a little in between the other thing. Uh, I'll try to see what I can find out, hopefully I'll know this Thursday, if not, it'll be next Tuesday. But, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm about there to, to kind of, we, it just seems like it'd be a whole lot easier, though, for them, the public, to vote, to have this done. Because, you weren't in here, Kelly, when I was talking about it, uh, if the public votes it, it's everything. It's not just, because the, the state...
Oh, it's frozen.
Yeah, the, the statute reads that you can't, I think it's the Blind Trust Fund or something like that, you can't touch, and there was something else. Well, that blind, Blind Trust Fund is in that, on your tax form, that top state, that's where that is put in. So you, you can't touch that one, but the way it was written, you can touch everything. Now, being a township, I know Jim has said, you know, you gotta be careful, because somebody might want, you know, if you do it to the schools, and I get it, they might wanna see it. I honestly don't think they would, it's not gonna be worth their money and time to try to do something like that. But if it's done through a vote, nobody can do anything, it's a done deal. So I, that part, I do know. So it just seems like if, if we, if we put it in and we give people back seven bucks, say, ten, I don't, I don't know what it's gonna be. All this trouble and all this time, and people have been waiting, and that's all they get, they're not gonna be real pleased. If we...
Well, that's also a mistake, part two.
Yeah.
That's, that's out of our hands.
When you look at the levies, how many, how many towns have freeze the levy, girl?
There's not really a general, I mean, it's...
No, it's not very...
It's just once in a while.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying, actually.
With the school, but when you have sixty-three different entities with taxing, taxing levies, I mean, you've always got something changing.
That's right.
It's not just, just townships that you're looking at.
There'll be other things, hit it. Find everyone, I don't know how it works.
I don't know the answer either.
Like I said, let, let me, let me give you a little bit more, see what I can find out, uh...
My main concern is...
That will be one of the things I'll, I'd like to know.
What it's gonna save the individuals, just the typical person.
Right.
Out here on the street, or, you know, 'cause even older people, uh, in fact, my taxes go down more than they go up, 'cause depreciates out.
I know.
It does.
Two-thirds of my property taxes went to school.
That's...
Oh, well, yeah, but it always goes there.
Nothing else, nothing goes down.
Yes, but the big...
My car value goes down, my insurance goes up, my property taxes goes up. I ain't never seen my property taxes drop in sixty-eight years.
Well, I know, I know, I know for a fact, and I asked Scott, Scott said they didn't send him one. But I know a lot of the counties in Missouri got a letter from whoever it is that tells them they need to up or lower. They all got a letter telling them to reassess and raise their value, because this one ninety was coming. So they, that's probably part of the reason.
Yeah, and they done that in Kansas City, and then the state told them, no, you can't do that crap.
Right, right.
'Cause I don't know what the percentage they can, they're raising down here, but I'm sure it's over fifteen percent. And the state's fifteen percent top.
Yeah, that, I, that's out of my league.
I don't know how, that part I don't know.
Circus.
I don't know how they assess.
And it's just like property taxes, your real estate taxes, if you make under thirty thousand a year, you can get them back. But we still pay property taxes on the same property we paid taxes on, boy, we bought it, and we pay it every damn year.
I personally...
And that, you're right.
Yeah, personally, I would like to get rid of all of it.
I'd like to see everything from the IRS go down.
Yeah, yeah, but at least, at least, I'm not a big government person, and I, I firmly believe you could run this government, every bit of it, even all the way up to federal. If you, I mean, we, we, we did without taxes for years in this country, they never had them. Now we got so many gimmick programs that we're gonna give you this, and you don't have to get off your lazy butt and go to work.
Yeah.
I'm not, uh-uh, I know, no. If you got two hands, you got two feet, and you're healthy, then you go to work. If you, if you have a disability, or, you know, physical, mental, whatever, then you know what, yeah. That, that's where people come alongside and help. Actually, that's, used to be, that's where the churches came alongside.
Churches and...
Government needs to stay out of it. Protect your borders.
We had something back then we don't have now, called common sense.
Well, that's, well, you've got too many people that wanted to live, it's like if this is a utopian world. And it's like, I wanna take care of you because I know you need it. But that's okay to a point. But you start doing that for everybody, and now the guy sitting next to you, I'm taking care of, he's young, he's twenty-five, and he can work, why am I paying for him? And that's, that's the mindset that this country has taken, whether it's federal, state, county, whatever. That's, it is, that's what it is. And, and that's that utopia, and we all wanna live in a really great, and be, you know, feel good about ourselves.
Do you know what, uh...
I wish the county would have a deal to get rid of all these people out around McDonald's and out there setting out there with signs. There's one guy, I seen him twice, day before yesterday.
I had a cough.
Thirty-two years old, probably, pulled a sign, needs help, I rolled my window down, said, every place around here is higher, you get a damn job.
Well, that's why I see...
I don't throw them money, I throw them in so...
You see a lot of, and I don't know the answer, just like what we're doing there for the homeless. Most of those people could work.
Sure.
Yeah.
And, and the high, the drug situation with these young kids, that's what's happening there. And then as they're getting older, they don't have work, 'cause there was no responsibility.
It's generations, it's turning generations.
Yeah, most of it comes back to the parents.
Ninety-nine percent.
That's where it's wrong.
When we got in trouble, we paid for it.
In fact, I'd rather, I'd rather gotten in trouble at school.
Coming home.
My dad fired out, and then it's a bad scene.
If you got in trouble at school, you knew what was coming when you got home.
Guess what, it's a lot worse.
You jumped off the bus, and you went straight to doing chores and everything you could find to pick up, you picked up, because you knew dad was gonna be the killer.
Was that, it was mom.
Well, dad just had to talk, mom wore out more metal flush waters on me, she never did on flush.
Get rid of it, get rid of all of it, bring it back a little bit.
Now, that's the difference in where we're at now and other, and that's what, and I, I don't know the answer to that, just like here. Don't know what's gonna happen. If you say, well, it's just common sense, they need to help these people, then how far do you go? Just like, oh, we're doing right here for the homeless, and right...
Honestly, I, I think that's actually a good idea, provided, and I was really happy to hear him say...
The way they do it is what I like.
Yeah, yeah.
They only can stay, what, two weeks, and that's it.
You, you...
Get their IDs.
You should give people a hand up, you should, I don't care, I mean, everybody makes mistakes, I get that. So you help people until they decide they're not gonna help themselves.
Then they throw them to the wolves.
Yeah, that's it, then they're on their own.
Yeah.
I'm good, thank you.
To go back to your Senate Bill one ninety, uh, there's another caveat that you need to think about. You have to elect to freeze every single year as a taxpayer, this isn't something that just happens. And you have to make that election whenever you decide, probably May, June, July. But your property tax bill for that year doesn't come out till November. So you don't have the information that you need to know if you should freeze that year or preceding year. My case, my taxes actually went down, dollar sixty, I think it was. And if I had selected a two this year, I would've paid that extra. There's, that's a problem in that bill, is when is that information, when does the election have to be made? And do you have the information to actually make that decision? The way it seems to be set up is you're not gonna have it.
Yeah.
And if it did go down, you have to wait till next year.
Might as well get a head start.
Mark, do you have documentation, um, specifically stating that when the public votes to implement this? Will that be in the ballot initiative, what it says, you're gonna freeze all of them? 'Cause I never saw anything in what I read that addressed that, it was just whether or not you're gonna force the commissioners to implement it by a vote of the public. Then you're, that's the case, you're still stuck with which levies and, and all of that.
I think, and like I said, I'm, I'm not, this isn't one hundred percent locked in. Uh, but I think that the ballot itself will read, that they're going to accept it and lock the way it reads. Because the way it was written, it was supposed to be straight across the board, everything.
Yeah, it appears that way.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's what it appears.
So if, if, if that's the case, then that's, I mean, you have to almost put it on the ballot that way. Because that way, you don't have to worry about, well, you didn't, you know, because you, you get into the intricacies of all of this, that's where you start picking holes up.
Subby's gonna come up early.
I wish it was a little clearer, maybe you don't want to list every levy, 'cause there's tons of levies.
No, no, I wouldn't list everybody, I'd just list the whole...
Rather than just saying you have a power to freeze levies in general, maybe the word all, all county levies.
Right, right.
Get frozen. So the people that are paying attention in the English will figure what that means.
Yeah.
Because that, the statute itself's a little bit of a pain that way.
I, hey, what, the big thing is, we just wanna make sure we get in there to make sure that we're not gonna then get her on the end. Is that true?
Well, Mark's got a good point there, by letting the people vote on it, 'cause that's pretty much...
Yep.
Well, it, it, it takes us out of...
The fight over, get the suit for the levy, all voters, so if you move, I don't know if you'll get out of it.
That's not a bad idea.
But, uh...
And you get, and I mean, to do that, you gotta get, I think it's five percent, I think, I don't know a hundred percent. Like I said, I haven't been, I've looked at this originally, and then I got involved in that other stuff, but, but if, I think it's five percent of, uh, the last gubernatorial election is what you've got to come up with, which I think is like eight, probably eight hundred and something, maybe? People, maybe, maybe more than that. Uh, but then, all that does, that's just the signature for, to get it put on the ballot.
It's already broke.
Huh?
Your blind's already broke.
We just, it's just, we're just, I don't know how many phone calls I've taken.
Water up here is the hottest water in this house.
I'd like to get through that and get, get it out there, 'cause...
People think they're gonna get a windfall out of it.
That's what they think.
That's just not the case, unless your property's being mostly under assessed, and all of a sudden it gets adjusted.
And that should have been taken care of.
They still have to deal with the adjustment that you guys have.
Me a wee.
Yeah. And I need eight most of their, their mind. I know my assessment's been going up, once the taxes are being stated, they're gonna have to adjust any of it.
Good morning, Teddy.
Good morning, Teddy.
Morning.
Okay.
We were slow, so we thought we'd see if you'd come up.
I think we're ready for you.
Oh, ready, all right, all right.
Yes, 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 yes.
So, uh, basically, I just wanted to kinda give an update. Um, I wasn't able to make it to the meeting last week, but there was some questions regarding how come the Clinton sirens went off last Wednesday morning, and how come people didn't get the alerts on Everbridge. So it is something that I'm working on right now, I did go over and talk to nine-one-one dispatch. Um, I wanted to see what their SOPs were as far as sounding the sirens. So according to Jennifer, she said that emergency management, Clinton Fire, and then the dispatchers can sound the sirens. The dispatchers will receive an email from the National Weather Service stating the warning. Now here's what happened. It was for northeast Henry County, the polygon, the warning area did not include Clinton, that's geographical. However, in their email, under areas affected, it showed Windsor, Calhoun, and Clinton. The girl seen that and went ahead and flipped the switch for the sirens. Now, the reason why that was is, I had sent the email to Jonathan Kurtz at the National Weather Service to get his take on this, but what I believe is happening is you can live several miles north of Clinton and still have a Clinton address. So I think that's where there's a little bit of conflict there between, between the polygon and, uh, which is just geographical versus, say, a zip code or a mailing address. And I think that we're, we're having a little bit of issue there, hopefully Jonathan will, uh, whether or not this was wording... Hopefully Jonathan will, uh, whether or not this was wording by the National Weather Service, or if it's something, maybe a conflict between geographical and zip code or address. Um, but, you know, by right, the city of Clinton was not impacted, nor was, uh, you know, northwest, west, or south of Clinton was impacted by that polygon. So, um, kind of going forward, what I'm hoping Jonathan is gonna say is, you know, that's a little bit of wording error maybe on our part, let us work on that so that this doesn't happen again. But there is potential that we could see that again. Now, probably, if that arises, probably the best thing to do is to have Clinton Fire or Emergency Management get ahold of dispatch and say, hey, Clinton is not involved in that here. But I would much rather have the sirens go off and not need it versus not sounding the sirens and then have it clip the northern part of Clinton. So, um, it was no fault of the dispatchers, um, which was good, and Jennifer was very straightforward. She said nobody had asked her anything about it. She said she kept the paperwork just in case that you would show up, Subby. So, anyway, she, she knew I was gonna be probably coming up at some point in time. Um, so, uh, and of course, I'll give an update if I hear back from the National Weather Service out of Pleasant Hill on that. The second thing I wanted to talk to you guys about was, uh, I think it's a very, very good idea as far as the old Emergency Management Building to be a storm shelter. Um, I was glad to see that. Um, but, on the other hand, we also got, uh, an email, and was told by the city fire chief, Mark Manuel, who is also the city's, uh, emergency manager, that, um, that in order for that to be designated as an official tornado or storm shelter, a structure must meet extremely strict criteria based off the city's adopted fire or building codes, in which, uh, he does not believe that that building meets. Now, he sent that to Mark and I both. And, then when Mark approached you guys with it, you guys said, well, go ahead and open up the doors. I just want to be, Mark's not gonna be here today, and this is something Mark and I have been trying to do since we teamed up in the Emergency Management Department, and that is to open up dialogue, communication within the county, something that's been missing for years. Uh, we're doing that by having first responder meetings, by doing, uh, by doing tabletop exercises to bring the community together. And what's happening here is you guys are pitting us against the county versus the city. And I don't think that's a place that we need to be. Um, Mark is the city fire chief, he's also the city emergency manager. He tells us not to do it, and then Mark gets told, no, you go ahead and do it. I don't think that's our place. Um, I would think this would be a situation in which the commissioners, one of you guys, all of you, whatever, phone call, stop by, talk to Mark about what can we do to get this thing either adopted as a storm shelter or completely take it off the list as a storm shelter for Henry County. Um, I just, I, I don't feel right being in the middle between Clinton and Henry County. And, because what we're trying to do, it, it's tough, because everybody has been pretty much just their own team for so, for so long. It's everybody out for themselves, and that's what we're trying to do, is to bring everybody together. So, you know, I would, I would approach this where I think this would be a great opportunity for somebody to stop by, talk to Mark, and let's air this thing out. Either we use it, we don't, what would it take for us to temporarily use it? Um, until maybe something else, Jim had mentioned a possible grant out there for a, uh, a community storm shelter. Um, and unfortunately, all those funds are dried up now because of the federal government. Um, they have, we received the email two days ago stating that, uh, all grants for Emergency Management have now been suspended. Uh, the only one that they do still have right now is the EPG grant, would pay for half the salaries. But according to Gloria Brandsetter, she is the, uh, she's kind of our, our liaison for Emergency Management. She said that, uh, there's a possibility, the third and fourth quarter of twenty-twenty-five, that's gonna be asked. Um, so, this is something that is gonna, you know, it, it's really going to affect, uh, every county here in, in, in Missouri, but, and, and nationwide for that matter, but, um, that's something that, going forward, we can take a look at, but, um, and again, I think it would be a good idea for one of you guys, maybe just to call Mark, and let's air this thing out, so this doesn't become a, a battle between, hey, I told you guys not to open it up, and well, commissioner told us to open it up, and we don't wanna be in the middle. We wanna bring everybody together. Um, so that's really the two things that I want, just wanted to address today.
Subby, the only thing I got thinking about was, lord behold, I know the roof is not in good shape over there. Say something, I don't care if you have a tornado, when it comes through, something's through, I've been there, goes through, and kills some people down below. That's where you get into, because it's not a rated storm, and it has to be follow the guidelines. I knew, I got thinking about it, and that's what worried me about, even open up, because you open up a building, and somebody goes in there and gets killed, guarantee you, the city's liable, or county's liable for it. That's the problem I have, because I was telling some of the things, we just got over a case that went for three years or better, over a drowning, that somebody didn't bother with the signs and then drove around them, guess what? But then, it was the county's problem, because we didn't have it properly marked. And that's where you gotta be also careful.
Exactly, and I think that's what Mark made.